Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this meeting of the Policy Committee, which as ever is being recorded and also webcast live for people to watch if we're not in the packed public gallery already tonight. Do we have any declarations of interest for items today?
No.
Okay, brilliant. Item three, minutes of the previous meeting, any comments on those? No, so are we all agreed that I can sign those as a correct record? Wonderful, thank you very much. On to item four, petitions and questions. We have a grand total of one councillor question, no petitions, no public questions. Councillor question number one is councillor White and it is to the Lead Councillor for Climate Strategy and Transport, councillor White.
Thank you Chair. This is on drone superhighway above Reading. In January this year, The Guardian newspaper broke the story that something called Project Skyway intended to create a drone superhighway above Reading and beyond. BT is said to have invested £5 million in the project and its website lists one of its partners as Reading Borough Council. Residents are understandably confused and concerned and it's game plans that affect them are being made behind closed doors. Can the lead member responsible give us any information on the council's plans for drone flights above Reading?
Thank councillor White, councillor Ennis.
Thank you Chair and thank councillor White for his inquiry into this emerging project. Project Skyway is an innovate UK funded future flight project which is exploring the opportunities for beyond line of site flights. The lead partner is Altitude Angel, a Reading based company. The council has partnered in Project Skyway for the very reasons that councillor White has raised concerns. Drone technology beyond the line of site technology and regulation thereof is emerging and without engagement from local authorities, without council engagement, local place making and regulation risks missing out on scrutiny and expertise as well as engagement from residents. The council along with Oxfordshire County Council and Coventry City Council are partnering to provide advice on the application of the technology across the originally scoped superhighway flight path which starts outside the southern borough boundary and moves up to Coventry. Whilst the superhighway is the focus of elements of the commercial case for the project, current proposals for drone flights within the borough are highly limited in scope and scale and would be subject to consideration on a case by case basis. Officers are engaging with the Future Flight Project team to provide advice as part of regular work streams and have recently conducted two focus groups with residents which forms part of the feedback into the project team. As councillor White may be aware, Thames Valley Police are already regularly piloting flights in the area as well as other commercial drone operators.
Thank you. Thank you councillor Ennis. Councillor White, did you have a supplementary question?
Yeah, just a quickie please. Thank you for your response councillor Ennis. Can you clarify the route that the superhighway will be taking through the town or over the town?
Councillor Ennis?
No. We can get that information, you can certainly get that information by submitting a written question on your councillors' inquiries if you want and you will get a detailed feedback on any specific questions that you've got regarding this project.
Thank you councillor Ennis. That takes us to the end of councillor questions. So we move on then to item five, which is a voluntary and community sector compact for 2023 to 2025. And I have Gavin Handwell to present and then Rachel Spencer from RVA has asked to speak for a bit as well. So Rachel, if you wanted to set yourself up at the public speaking microphone directly in front of me, it saves you having to move later and I'll hand over to Mr Handwell.
Thank you Chair. I'll be very brief. So the report before you recommends that the committee approve the VCS compact for Reading. The compact has been developed in partnership with the voluntary sector across Reading and I'm really pleased Rachel is here this evening. I'd like to thank the RVA for their help in coordinating that work. The compact is intended to cover the period from 2023 to 2025. This will align it with the closing the gap funding agreements that the council has with various VCS organisations. I think it's a positive move to have a strategic statement like this, setting out how the council and VCS will work together for the benefit of Reading residents. We will have an action plan behind this and that will be reviewed annually in partnership with the voluntary and community sector, ensuring that this continues as a partnership approach. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sorry for getting your name wrong, Mr Hanford. If it makes you feel any better, I'm James Brook more often than I'm Jason Brock and I'll pass over to Rachel Spencer from RVA.
Thank you. I've just got a couple of things to add and also happy to take any questions along with Gavin. Yeah, so I'm here really to represent, so Rachel Spencer, I'm the Chief Officer for Reading Voluntary Action and I'm here to represent the Reading voluntary sector leaders who have been involved in the development of this new compact for Reading. There's been much debate and discussion as you can imagine and expect and I'm pleased to say that the leaders group are universally supportive and very optimistic about this final version of the document. We hope it's very much a live document and following this evening, the leaders and RVA will be raising awareness that this is a new compact for Reading and encouraging the wider sector to get involved in the development of that action plan. And that starts, we've got a VCS assembly just in a couple of weeks on the 12th of October. So we're hoping to really start to get some momentum and engagement around that action plan. Pleased that this compact, different to previous versions, really recognises the diversity of the voluntary sector from those large corporate service provider charities through to the very different small community groups led by volunteers. And we hope and expect that that will follow through in the action plan very distinctively in the development of that relationship, how it currently is, but also how it could be and the potential of closer working between the council and those small voluntary community groups. And yeah, just really finally to say, really looking forward to coming back at some point and sharing with you how that's developed and giving examples of positive working relationship across the sector. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before I open to general debate, did anybody have a question for Ms Spencer? No, no, okay, wonderful. Thank you very much for that and I will open up the debate then and I had prior indication from councillor Terry.
Thank you Chair and thank you to Rachel Spencer for coming along to support the compact, just to ensure that everybody understands that this has been something that's been co-produced with the voluntary and community sector along with council officers. So I think quite a bit of time has been spent trying to get it right. The proof's always in the pudding because in some ways these are all nice, wise, wonderful words, but I think it does clearly set out a sort of joint ambition, as it says in here, a broad ambition really to work together for the benefit of Reading residents. And sometimes that will be reactive and wonderful, like the response the community gave us when Covid came along and there will be other times when that will be the case. And sometimes it's more formal, contractual, like the closing the gap where there's kind of you said you do this and we need to just check that you are doing it. But hopefully out of all of the different arrangements that we have, will be a sort of richer partnership with the council and the voluntary sector in terms of achieving things for the wider community. I'm pleased to see there'll be an annual review. I guess the proof will be in the pudding in the action plan when that gets developed and see how we can actually turn these words into action on the ground over and above what already happens of course, and so much does happen. Colleagues posed me a bit of a challenge earlier, so I'm going to just throw it out there. It's not a question that either of you, Gavin, Mr, needs to answer, Handford needs to answer tonight, or Rachel, but there are a wide range of organisations like the Civic Society for example and the Advisory Committee, I forgot what it's called already, for conservation. You know, and wider environmental partnerships that perhaps we don't see so much in because a lot of what we do is focused on particular needs of our communities, those who perhaps aren't doing quite so well. But it'd be interesting to see how that broadens out to a wider range of organisations and some real grassroots environmental organisations as well that can support people and do good things in terms of people's mental health and helping them to support them to get out and about. So I think it's just interesting to see how the compact will work with some of those other organisations, if they've even heard of it and perhaps we should contact them as well and make sure they know about it. So I certainly welcome it and just approve, ask the committee to prove the recommendations, Chair.
Thank councillor Terry. Any other indication? Councillor White?
Thank you Chair. Only to say a big thank you very much to the community and voluntary sector for all of the hard work that you do. I'm sure you'll relay it out from all councillors. Keep up the good work and yeah, I look forward to continuing to work with you.
Councillor Thompson?
Yeah, just wanted to say I can see a lot of work's gone into the document and just to say thank you for that and also there is more work ahead. Are there any deadlines for the action plan or any particular plans for bringing that about?
Not having any further indications, so it seems like a good opportunity to go back to the Assistant Director. Anything you wanted to say, summary?
My colleague Mark over there can probably give an indication of the time scales for the action plan, but a key element within it to address councillor Terry's point around making sure all of the sector is aware of this new compact, a key element within the action plan is going to be that raising awareness aspect and making sure that it works for the whole sector.
Yes, nobody will hear it on the recording, but we might hear it here and that will be good enough.
Thank you. So the action plan will be developed with the sector. As ever, in relationship to the voluntary sector, that will be sector led to a large degree, but the actions that we develop will be taken through the council's social inclusion board and that meets every six weeks. So there are two meetings of that before the end of the year. That will be the place where the action plan will be reviewed regularly. If it needs to be an iterative process with some actions starting sooner rather than later, we'll do that, but I would imagine that certainly by the end of the calendar year, we'll have something in place that we're all working on that's quite detailed.
Wonderful, thank you very much. Right, as just we'll go to the vote, I'm not detecting any antagonism to the recommendations, so I assume we're agreeing unanimously, yes? Wonderful, brilliant, thank you very much and thank you Assistant Director. Moves us to item six, strategic infrastructure, electric network capacity, and I have James Crosby here to present.
Thank you Chair. This paper sets out some of the challenges associated with servicing the growing energy demand and the impact that this is having on policy direction, specifically the delivery of local plan policies and climate emergency. In particular, this paper sets out some examples of where constraints have been encountered and those impacts. And there are some changes on the horizon which will support the development of a more strategic approach to energy demand management, in particular work on a local area energy plan. This will move network operators to more whole system approach and also offers an opportunity to develop a regional approach, which is important when considering infrastructure. Officers have met with Scottish and Southern Electricity and had some constructive conversations with individual sites and the wider approach that needed to support both net zero and economic development in Reading and the wider region. Members of this committee will have received a submission from SSE, setting out the local position and what they want to see, what they want to do to work with us. Of particular note is that there is no set cap, as we've been informed by various developers, but there is a case by case approach being taken with more flexibility applied than previously understood and that the council will be able to engage with the local energy net zero accelerator tool which will support future demand modelling. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. I mean, something that's been on the radar for a little while, but has become rather more pronounced and obvious recently and I'm grateful that councillor Leng was the first really to flag it frustrations he was getting from developers, but it's something that's also caused us bother with some of our own council developments and there is clearly a systematic problem. Really pleasing that you've had some constructive engagement with SSE in recent days, but a bit frustrating that we're having to go through a case by case basis to try to unlock particular sites when really we would want things to be much better at the system level. Ultimately, I think there's a bit of failure on the part of national policy, planning, investment in infrastructure and indeed the regulator around this. And it does concern us that it might frustrate some of our ambitions as we progress towards net zero, particularly getting lower carbon forms of heating installed in some of the developments that are coming forward. But it's interesting, I think, that, you know, in the week that we've had government floundering around about net zero commitments, that it may have in fact just transpired that because of the lack of engagement with the less thrilling side of the infrastructure development, that it wasn't possible to deliver those net zero commitments at all anyway. But I know that councillor Leng wanted to add a few words as well.
Yeah, thank you Chair. I couldn't have put it better myself actually with your words and I know councillor Ennis is going to come in in a minute and I thank officer Crosby for all the work that he's put in on this. It's good to see SSE finally coming forward and how the big wigs such as Ofgem have now got involved. I noted that they said they're looking for some immediate relief by seeking to remove projects that are progressing, not at the required pace and looking to reallocate supply, you know, so I do wonder how that would work out considering that that capacity's deposited, they pay a deposit against that, don't they? So I just wondered how would those applications still be sound? To put some meat on the bones to our viewers tonight, we've got two I think, I will flag up what's in 3.4, which is a dwelling is between five and 10 kva and large developments between 500, between 50 and 100 houses or dwellings were, I was told by the officer that there wasn't a cap, but indeed they were capped to 500 kva, that's a fact. And a specific example, we had come back to the planning applications committee, was a quite high profile development which was conditioned to fit air source heat pumps as part of, which is policy and contributes towards our contribution towards net zero in this town. You know, there's a lot of heavy lifting being done by people in the town, particularly the residents, and they were told that the request for 2153 kva was not possible and they could only have 500 kva. This meant that the developer, which was perfectly willing to put in the air source heat pumps then, had to come back and ask the planning authority whether they could fit the old gas boilers. So it may not have been an official cap, but the cap definitely existed. It's good to see SSE finally speaking with planning authorities and relevant organisations because if we are ever going to get to net zero, it's going to be a partnership, partnership of government, partnership of business, partnership with residents, partnership with local businesses and countrywide. So it's important that we win hearts and minds, bring the people with us and show that they're all, we're all playing a part in this. But that's it, thank you Chair.
Councillor Ennis?
Yeah, thanks. I'm going to maybe at the risk of repeating from two excellent, sorry, excellent contributions already. This has been flagged up as far as climate strategy is concerned. The grid capacity is a major risk factor, it's a major risk factor locally and it's a major risk factor nationally. And if you read at 3.5, there is a huge need for investment and there's a £1 billion worth of uncertainty from 2328 which could have an impact on net zero locally. And, you know, let's be clear about this, whilst the Tories have all but given up in attempting to deal with a climate emergency, we all voted for that climate emergency. We have an MP that went international, you know, and lots of words, lots of great plans and they've gone, but Reading haven't. We signed up about the climate emergency, it still exists, it's massive, it's major, it's probably one of the most important issues that we are going to face. What sort of planet are we going to leave our children is the question that we should all be answering as politicians and council officers, anybody involved at all should be taking responsibility. We in Reading are clear and highly ambitious, hugely ambitious in reaching net zero by 2030. These challenges will be made more difficult by the Tories and the grid capacity which is linked, you know, and I know locally councillor Mitchell, that Conservatives, councillors have shared the same view locally and the MP shares the same view. So not all Conservatives are anti getting us to net zero, but sadly the Prime Minister and his inner cabinet are and they're the ones with the levers. The government are missing the trick really because to talk about net zero, bringing it into the art of politics, which is a real shame that we've lost our consensus and this is linked around net zero and working towards green energy and working towards a climate which is more sustainable because, you know, you ditch stuff, pull them back five, 10 years, you do not expect to get there within two years. That will affect residents, that will affect business, that will affect the country and it will affect the climate. It will be too late. And Peter Moore has explained this, an outstanding council officer, which I would, you know, certainly recommend all, he's a busy man, but it's worth every councillor engaging with the work that he's doing. And he's made the points and he's challenged us to say, the more you do now, the better chance you have of reaching net zero without heavily impacting on residents and heavily impacting on the climate and business. The more you do now, the more better it will be, a sliding wedge to make life, because it's challenges, but it's made, you can't make all changes in 2045, obviously he's not going to be in government, then is he, he's not going to be in government in 2024 and he knows that. But you can't make big changes five years before the date, you can't make big changes 18 months before the date, you have to start now. And this report is doing that and I really think it's excellent that the council have picked it up and that they're engaging with SSE to say that we have concerns because we have a lot of ambitions, we have a lot of work. If you look at the work that's going on in this council to get to net zero, I think is excellent. You know, the carbon footprint in the people of Reading is lower than most places in the south east of England and there's a lot of good work that's going on, leadership from this council and this is a report that's doing that. We need SSE, we need decent investment into our electric infrastructure for us in order to be able to have net zero and climate sustainability. It's a vitally important report and we've got to say now, we're doing that, we're attempting to do that, we won't give up on net zero 2030, we're certainly not going to give up on that. We owe it to our residents, we owe it to the young people and the children, as I keep saying. What sort of planet are we going to leave people? It's not about elections next year, that is not the issue. The issue is what sort of planet are we going to leave? And this report is part of that link, it's linked together and it's good for us to engage with SSE, to show them our concerns and to try and work with them to ensure that we can get capacity into our network because we've got a lot of ambitions with EV charging points, with electric vehicles, with net zero, with carbon, with heat pumps. The council are doing it in flats, the council, I'm going to call now, don't worry. It's not hot air that's causing the planet to heat up, but I will finish. We've got ambitious plans to do that and therefore I welcome this report. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Ennis. I think before I get to councillor White, who's indicated, I think it might be worth saying as well, because we've been a bit Reading focused, that this is something of concern to the other Berkshire authorities as well. The chief executive and I took a version of this report to the Berkshire Leaders Group who agreed to sort of join in with that lobbying effort around SSE and around government, around Ofgem and the whole system approach. And I know that this has been something of great frustration to colleagues over in Wokingham as well, where plans for a sort of solar energy generation area had been put on hold because they couldn't get the interconnector they needed. So it's not, you know, it's not just about getting electricity to things that require electricity, but about getting electricity from clean sources of generation into the grid. So it really is a very problematic issue indeed. Councillor White?
Thank you Chair. As councillor Leng said, the only relevant development I can think of so far is the Caversham Golf Club one, where unfortunately all Labour councillors voted to go ahead with the scheme despite 150 houses not being connected to air source heat pumps and therefore having to have gas boilers installed. It was only Labour councillors who were paralysed into inaction, not Greens, we voted against it. As this is obviously against the local plan, why didn't you vote against it, Labour councillors? And why wasn't this working together with SSE done well before such large developments were given the go ahead? And finally, why are the developers themselves not part of the solution if they can't build sustainable houses due to network issues? Can't we take contributions from them to enhance the network?
A very simplistic, one might say, misunderstanding of how the local plan works and you know that full well, but also, I mean, it continues to surprise me that in the context of a severe housing shortage in this town, you continue to oppose the building of homes, including affordable homes. You really need to think about what you support as a party. I mean, this nimbyish approach that you simply go for time and time again lets residents down and you know it and you do it simply because you chase that nimby vote wherever possible. Councillor Mitchell?
Thank you councillor White indicating, no. Thank you Chair for that. Unlike both sides, we're not seeking to politicise this any further this evening. The decision has been taken regarding that particular development, as councillor Leng rightly pointed out. It is frustrating, not just to the developers, but to the community, many of whom obviously opposed this development in the first place. But now that it is there, we are endeavouring as ward councillors to build as constructive a working relationship with both developers and the opposing groups as best we can and that is going quite well so far. We're hopeful of having a public meeting in the near future for residents to discuss their concerns about it. I agree with much of what councillor Ennis said and I'm grateful to him for acknowledging that we on this side have done our best as local Conservatives to make sure that the concerns are rightly heard. But councillor Leng is right to point out that this particular project, high profile as it is, has been frustrated by this. So all I would say is as this is on the agenda tonight and that channels are open to SSE, as we've seen from their submission, we as ward councillors would urge both RBC officers involved in this particular project and SSE to do all in their power, no pun intended, to make sure that this particular problem is overcome so that the Emma Green Drive development, as it's now been called, is at least as successful as it can be now that the decision has been taken. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Mitchell, I applaud the maturity. Councillor White?
I was just going to say councillor Brock, that when you actually manage to hit one of your affordable housing targets, I'll be happy to listen to you more seriously. Thank you.
I suppose it's, we'd come even closer if the Greens didn't vote against almost every single entirely affordable housing development that we propose in this town. I'll go later and enumerate them and bring them for our reference next time. Councillor Leng?
Thank you Chair and I welcome the comments from councillor Mitchell. A chair constructive sometimes criticism, but always constructive, unlike councillor White is always looking for a quick tweet or get picked up by Reading Chronicle. I wasn't going to mention affordable housing because I thought councillor Ennis might pick it up, but the point is there's certain times that if these developments can't get electric supply, then they become unviable, yeah? There's a viability issue and then we all know what homes will get sliced off the list first, it will be the affordable. So, you know, I didn't actually name the high profile development he thought he'd get in there, I don't even think it's actually mentioned. Anyway, I'm glad you picked it up for me and not from the report. So, yeah, so that's it really and I totally agree with the nimbyism with the Green Party at the moment. It's all, let's build affordable houses, oh no, not there, let's build more affordable houses, oh no, not there. Okay, thank you Chair.
Same thrilling debate the Lib Dems are having at their conference at the moment, I see. Anyway, here we are. Anyway, here we are, I suggest that we proceed to the vote. I'm unclear whether there's antagonism or not. So let's take it with a show of hands, those in favour. Oh, there we are, unanimous, wonderful. Thank you very much Assistant Director. Moves us on to item seven, the equally thrilling review of the constitution. And I have Mike Graham, the monitoring officer, to present.
It may not, it may not be as exciting. Thank you Chair. And councillors, you may recall that in October 22, we had a review of the constitution, which contained a number of different measures. And at that time, we promised to bring a review back at this time, a year later, just to check in that everything was going in accordance with that, that review that we intended and the objectives that we were looking for at that time. So in this report, I've outlined a few of the things which have happened since, including a reminder about the way in which we have altered the key decision criteria and the decisions to be made between committees and generally in, and with officers as well. Also to outline that some of the provisions that we've put in place since regarding training and some of the new structures that we've put in to support that revised key decision criteria. And so far, generally, it seems to be that will be guidelines that we put into place and the, and the new criteria seem to be working reasonably well. We haven't had any complaints that things have been taken. Officers have been making decisions which councillors were not aware of. And so it's worth keeping an eye on this matter going forward as was whether or not we've got the criteria right. So further, there are a couple of other matters which weren't considered in the review in 22. One was the review of the financial regulations, and it's detailed in the report, the reasons why they're not presented and when they are coming next to our committee. And also you'll note that the contract procedure rules, which was part of the review missing from last year, is going to be presented to the Audit and Governance Committee later on this week. We've got reference to the Audit and Governance Committee Terms of Reference, which this committee has already considered earlier in the year. And we've also cleared up a number of minor matters in this review, including some revised wording to Article 12 about officer appointments. And we've also then asked the senior leadership group if there were any other minor issues which needed to be picked up. And so we have addressed those in the report, including a ceiling of documents, casual appointments to committees and then some, some panels which are no longer required, the school admission forum and the cultural partnership board. So this report will be tracking further to council in October.
Very thrilling, exactly as I said. Look, good that we're reviewing matters. I think it's important with the previous incarnation of the constitution, we hadn't done a wholesale review for some time. So good to get into a rhythm around these things with the sort of school admissions forums being swept away nationally. I think it's also really positive to be clarifying that role for ACE as a sort of scrutiny committee for school admissions. A much better, higher profile place to be doing that work in any case. Councillor White.
Just a quick one, thank you Chair. With the officer decision notices, it would be handy if they were emailed around to councillors on the relevant committee because they're buried away on the, in the committee library that I had to ask you to direct me to today. So it's as well as the lead councillors being interested, I assume other councillors on the relevant committees would be interested. So like we email round decision books, maybe we could think about emailing round the officer decision notices.
It's not an unreasonable point, or maybe they could be collated in some other way. I mean, we used to, we used to have a list of the decision books that come in at every relevant committee meeting. Maybe we could restore that, I don't know. But I think it's a good point.
Anybody else? No? Wonderful. Well, we'll all have the chance to discuss it again at council fairly soon anyway. So I'm assuming unanimous approval. Good, good, wonderful. Thank you. Progresses us on then to item eight, which I've forgotten the title of, there we are. The Rough Sleeping Drug and Alcohol Treatment Grant and Multiple Disadvantage Outreach Team Contract. And we have Martin White online to present.
Thank you Chair. Can you hear me okay?
We can, yes.
Thank you. Yes, this paper seeks approval to go to a procurement for the Rough Sleeper Drug and Alcohol Treatment Grant for 2425, for a one year plus 18 months contract with an expected total value of £1,866,460 over that period. On the condition that the Department for Leveling Up Housing Communities extend the grant beyond 202425, we're also seeking approval for the delegated authority of award of the new contract from the 1st of April 2024 and any extension which is given to the Executive Director of Communities Adult Social Care in consultation with our Lead Councillor for Education and Public Health. The reason for this is that the alignment is important. The existing contract with the provider goes through to 30th of September 2026. And that's why we need the 18 month extension to bring them into alignment. It's also to ensure continuity of service and protect vulnerable residents using the service. And it should allow for us to maximise outcomes to be achieved from the service and to allow for the two peeing of staff if required. It's worth noting that the value of the contract at the moment for this part of it is £746,584. And the overall contract with CGL, Change Grow Live, in the 2223 outturn was £2,770. It's expected to rise to £2,075,770 in 2324. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have prior indication from councillor McKeon.
Thank you Chair. And I thank officers for this report. As highlighted, the report seeks to procure an award funding and a continuation of the, the current contract. And the current funding has been used to support an outreach service which engages with numerous partners and stakeholders and impacts on health qualities and, and helps us to increase understanding around drug and alcohol treatment and incredibly important work. So yeah, I really welcome this report. Thank you.
Thank you councillor McKeon. Councillor White.
Thank you Chair. Unfortunately, the, the number of people sleeping rough in Reading is going up, as it is around the country. Many people sleeping rough will have a drugs or alcohol problem. In London, St Mungo's thinks it's roughly six in 10 people. Tragically, the number of drug related deaths rose by 78% in Reading, has risen by 78% in Reading between 2010 and 2021. I'm glad that the Rough Sleeping Drug and Alcohol Treatment Grant has been continued and I do support the recommended actions. But the Conservative government have made so many cuts to local authority services. This is a drop in the ocean of what is needed. This is a neglected health crisis that Green councillors think requires more funding urgently. I had hoped that this report would have had some information in it about the performance of the contract, the outcomes it was achieving, the, the good it was managing to do. I don't know if we could hear a little bit about that and that, if that could be considered for future updates in this area.
Thank you councillor White. I think probably the, the updates around the performance of services like this is rightly within the remit of ACE committee, but I understand why you'd pose the question, given that we have the particulars of a contract award decision here. Important as well, within the context of, as you kind of alluded to, a public health grant that's been cut and Mr White will remind you, by about 26%, I think, in, in past sort of 10 years, which is quite a considerable amount of money lost in real terms, not just for services like this, but the, the whole swathe of public health services that we want to provide in the borough. Have you got any other indications? If I go back to Mr White to respond, sum up and then we'll go to the vote.
Thank you Chair. I, I do believe that councillor White was provided with some information late, earlier on today. I can say that the person who can provide the real detail for this is our Lead Commissioner, who is not with us at the moment, should be back to work tomorrow. There's no problems with the performance of the contract and on all, all the key performance indicators. There, the performance is good and is exceeding in most cases the KPIs.
Good to know. Thank you. Right, so we'll proceed to the vote, not detecting any antagonism, assuming this is therefore unanimous. Yeah, thank you very much. We move then to item nine, so a sort of double header report. We have Darren Carter, but we'll also have Gavin Handford. Did you want to come up to the public speaking mic and then we can, there you go, very neat, very neat. Who's going first? Who wants to lead off? Okay, Director of Finance, over to you.
Thank you. As you just said, this is the quarter one performance and monitoring report. Gavin will take you through the performance section in a moment, but I'll start by taking you through the financial projections. It feels like we're at a tipping point in local government finance. The current pay and inflation pressures combined with service demand pressures linked to the cost of living crisis are leading to a large number of councils simply being unable to cope. Recently, we had Sigoma reporting that 26 councils could be issuing section 114 notices in the next two years. So what's the situation at Reading? The first thing to say is that we remain financially stable. The budget pressures detailed in this report are manageable within the level of our reserves. So we're not in any imminent danger of having to issue a section 114 notice. However, we're not immune to the wider pressures impacting on local governments. A cost of living crisis with pay and inflation pressures far exceeding what was anticipated when the budget was set in February. Cost pressures arising from increasing demand and increasing complexity of need in children's social care services, adult social care and homelessness and income still not returning to pre-COVID levels. We're also failing to deliver on our own existing budget savings targets. As a result of these and other factors, there's a forecast adverse variance of £11.2 million on general fund services, including almost £4 million on economic growth neighbourhood services, over 1.1 million on resources and 5.8 million on brighter futures for children. Now, this is partly offset by corporate budgets, including a positive variance of 2.4 million on capital financing. You may also recall that the budget report included a corporate contingency of £4.1 million that was set for this year to mitigate against non-delivery of savings. This contingency is now fully released to offset against the adverse variance on service expenditure. So overall, this reports in, this results in a projected adverse variance of £3.8 million. One thing to note is that all services across the council have been tasked with bringing forward proposals to mitigate this in-year variance. General fund capital expenditure at the beginning of June was, was just under £3 million, with a forecast of 106 million being spent by the end of the year. HRA revenue is forecast to draw down 1.8 million pounds from reserves, an improvement of 600k against budgeted position. And the HRA capital programme is now forecast to spend £36 million this year. In the report, there are a number of recommendations to approve amendments to the general fund capital programme and to approve spend and scheme approval and also amendments to the HRA capital programme as well. Those are detailed throughout the report. In conclusion, the demand and inflation pressures highlighted in this report are not going away anytime soon. And there remains a very real risk that things will get worse before they start to get better. If we want to maintain our hard fought financial stability, then we need to take action now to get things under control. Over to Gavin to take you through the performance section.
Yep, thank you. So also within the report for you this evening, you have the latest performance against the council's corporate plan performance measures. The report provides a red amber green rating against each corporate plan measure and each corporate plan project. In addition, an indication is provided on the change in performance since the previous report, both positive and negative. Narrative is provided by the relevant service to give you further explanation for the performance reported. In table 17, you have an overview and the following sections provide further details, including outlining those areas where there has been a significant change since the last quarter. Although there are two measures that have been read now for two quarters running, both have shown an improvement since the last quarter. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I had prior indication from councillor Terry.
Thank you Chair. I mean, just to echo some of the things that councillor, as I said, the underlying forecast of just over 11 million demonstrates the continuing pressure that council, you know, council services are under. And as was said, we've seen recently a number of councils having to issue section 144 notices and many others saying that they may need to do so at some point in the future. The thing is worth remembering at this point that, you know, since 2010, this council alone has lost over £50 million in revenue support grant, given the austerity measures brought in by, oh, the coalition government. And as you reported in Reading today, I think it was leader, you know, could government as a whole need £3 billion of funding just to keep services as they are? Now, 3 billion is a really big number and I don't want to teach anyone in here to suck eggs, but I think if anybody's watching this, what does that really mean? Well, a billion is a thousand million. That means it's £3,000 million that local government is short of. And we can see that that, you know, in our own budgets is really starting to tell again. Now, as Mr Carter says, the council has been financially stable for some years now and there is mitigation underway to deal with these pressures and some of those are already in place. But clearly, the savings targets are looking under some pressure too, then the future looks very challenging. Now, inflation has been mentioned and it's a significant factor. And clearly, income levels haven't recovered yet from the pre-COVID levels and may never do because of the changing way society now, we all live. But the real life impacts of this are increasing levels of homelessness, partly because landlords can't, you know, afford to, to rent out their properties anymore. All scared by, you know, actually the things they needed to do, but important things for climate change. But the government suddenly, the Prime Minister suddenly announced that they might not be necessary anymore. But it's too late, people are already getting out. Mortgage rates make rent, you know, having mortgages is impossible. And I know many landlords are giving notice at the moment because simply they can't afford their mortgages. We've seen a doubling. So 71 people and families were in our emergency accommodation last year. And as of June, I think the figure is 136 people and families in emergency accommodation with no real prospect of being housed permanently anytime soon. The impact on, on people and families that that has is huge, particularly children who are unsettled, moving schools maybe, or parents having to struggle to get up really early to get their children to schools further and further away while maintaining their jobs. And that brings us to the second group, which is the increasing complexity of need of our children and young people. Many of this also is a result of the lockdown and COVID, and we know that, and their mental health. But other pressures and the costs in the market just going through the roof and making this almost unsustainable. Still nonetheless, you know, we're doing things like the chemist Carter said, looking at the capital programme, closely managing that in part to help manage our, our revenue budgets. But at the same time, still sticking with priorities that people in Reading have told us about, like, I see the bus company here as well, resurfacing our roads, making sure they run smoothly and high profile projects like the new library, the civic offices and the new performance space at the Hexham Theatre. But all these things that we want to deliver for the people of Reading and improve the quality of their lives and their experience in our town are coming under increasing pressure again. So I think we just need to note that it is quarter one, sorry, my, my colleagues, it's always often the worst position that we forecast. And I trust that council officers will be working very hard to put us back from that position. And as Mr Carter says, you know, we're doing much better than many other local authorities. But we just need to remember that there's huge pressure on what we're doing. And inevitably, that means that some of the things that we want to do may not get done as quickly as Um and inevitably, that means that some of the things that we want to do may not get done as quickly as we'd like. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Terry. Councillor Hoskin?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Chair. And I think, well, councillor Terry's touched upon a few of the things I was going to to mention, as you'd imagine, around. The the challenges being faced within um children's services. I mean, I think it's worth uh considering, I mean, we all know this is in the context of this significant and major underfunding of. Of councils, as councillor Terry said, but children's services uh in particular is facing a huge crisis in funding. Looking at the uh the estimates of uh of national underfunding in children's services. Uh in order to remain uh non-partisan, I'm going to quote the the former Conservative uh Chair of the Local Government Association. Uh early this year was was estimating a one point six billion pound shortfall nationally for children's services in England and actually, I know it's just England. Um, you know, so, you know, the challenges that we face in providing the services uh in Reading. I mean, are real uh and are are demonstrated in in the figures that were here before us today. So we take that seriously and we'll be looking at measures to to control spending and to, you know, to to control uh uh the 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 budget. Um it's also worth saying, I mean, this is in the context of ambitions around investing in things like early help. To support families at earlier stages and to to reduce families getting towards towards crisis, that's the right way to to go. The real challenge is when, you know, money is 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 much less and investment is much less than than we require. So really, it's just to say that this is, as I think, um as our officer says, you know, this is uh not times of panic, but actually take this really seriously. Uh work really hard to to bring this under control and to make sure that we uh handle people's um money uh appropriately. I think it's also, I mean, just as I'm speaking, reflecting um upon the fact that. You know, what what is good is we are in a fortunate position where we have a reasonably, uh you know, we we built reserves, we've got, um you know, we bought things under control. It's, I, you know. Almost on a on a monthly meeting basis, but certainly on an annual basis, we had sort of councillor White. You know, condemning us for making some really difficult decisions around controlling um bringing budgets. Under control and controlling expenditure and some of those decisions we made, we wouldn't want to make, you know, the result of the austerity of the last thirteen years. But that does put us in a position where we have the breathing space to make the, you know, sensible decisions around how we control spending rather than. Uh face uh the barrel of the gun of uh, you know, effective insolvency that a number of. Councils across the country are facing. So I, you know, I suppose it's a gratitude towards the hard work of our predecessors and officers to get us in a position where we've got now. Uh the space to work really hard to address the financial challenges that we have. Thank you.
I think it's probably no secret to say that, you know, back in sort of twenty sixteen, seventeen and shortly thereafter, you know, this council really was on. The financial precipice and actually quite a lot of difficult decisions had not been made and things had been uh deferred or ignored. And it took an awful lot of work by officers of this council and a lot of tough decisions by members to pull us back. From that situation and give us that platform of stability that we have used in the past few years to invest in the town and we will continue to do so. But also that platform stability that, as the director of finance has mentioned, as councillor Terry has mentioned, gives us the ability. To be able to say that we are not in the position of a great many councils up and down the country, where a great many are very seriously considering actively tonight. And over the next few weeks, whether or not to issue section one one four notices, that is the sad reality. And the only people who suffer when section one one four notices are issued, any people really suffer, of course, the residents themselves, who find their services. Hacked to the bone by commissioners in an effort to put things right, quote unquote, when it could have all been avoided. By much better uh financial planning by government. Two ways to solve this problem, in my view, one, give councils the funding that they require to deliver the services that they need to deliver. The other, of course, is far more fiscal devolution to councils and giving us more choices, more ability. To raise our own funding and to make choices which might be difficult, yes, might even be electorally unpopular, I should imagine. But it is right that we will be held accountable for them. Instead, we find ourselves in the messiest of possible situations. Councillor Emberson?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to acknowledge the homelessness pressures within the report and councillor Terry has spoken to. Some of the issues in terms of landlords selling up, which is an issue we're seeing in the town. Um I also know from officers that there is an increase in those um presenting as homeless who are leaving a domestic violence context. And there is a lot of work going on um with our voluntary sector to make sure that people are given the housing that they need. We also know that the limited private sector housing available is not affordable in Reading and um St Mungo's have literally today. Done a report in terms of homelessness and their first recommendation is about the local housing allowance. And how low that is. And in Reading, you get, I think it's one thousand and fifty a month for a free bedroom. But we know that um a private sector property in Reading is more like fourteen hundred a month. So residents are having to make really difficult decisions about how they budget in terms of using their own universal credit um basic allowance to top that up. So we know that those presenting are really struggling um with the cost of living generally, but also with their housing. Costs and the lack of it. And the report notes the difficulty in terms of the placement costs and a lot of councils have noted placement costs rising. And have really um cited homelessness budgets as the reason for nearly being on the brink. In terms of their anticipated overspend. So it's something that's really important um to keep an eye on and the report notes officers. Work to make sure that they can do as much as they can in terms of preventing people from being on that brink of homelessness. And I know a lot of work. Goes on in that space and in the unfortunate case that they are making sure that we quickly are able to support them in moving out of temporary accommodation. Because everyone should have a route out of rough sleeping and it should be prevented as much as it can. And I know officers are doing that work. Um and reports will track here and to H and L in terms of the procurement with our partners and on that work. Um to make sure we can do as much as possible because it's really important that we support those residents. Thank you, Chair.
I think I confidently predict that the next storm that will buffet the government is going to be around the rise in homelessness because. You know, people have this stigmatized stereotype of the kind of people who present to homelessness services, but actually, I mean, we're talking about. Professional families, people where landlords are getting out of the private rented sector, people aren't able to find another home and they are presenting. To our services and of course we support them, but think about the scale of the, you know, sort of one million pounds that we're talking about here in Reading. If we were a district council and our budget was somewhere between fifteen million and twenty million, that's what me and the chief exec think, maybe. Yeah, so roughly there, we're talking about a huge sum of money in proportion to a district council budget. So we are talking about district councils as well as the counties and the unitaries that are going to find this coming year and beyond horrifically. Challenging as they all try to do their very best by their residents, whatever political stripe is in control. Councillor White?
Thank you, Chair. Green councillors are obviously concerned that so early in the year, the council is predicting an overspend of three point eight million pounds. It it's also of concern that there is an increasing trend of non-delivery of savings with only forty two percent. Uh of the ones we agreed at the last budget meeting being on track or delivered this year. Given the cost of living crisis, it's no surprise that the report highlights family evictions being up as others have mentioned. Uh green councillors uh have got more housing-related casework than than we've ever had. Uh ev- evictions, uh temporary accommodation, emergency accommodation, discretionary housing payments, all all of that is just. It seems to be spiralling at the moment. It's it's pretty terrifying uh if you're in one of those situations. As the report says, in April twenty twenty two, there were forty families in emergency accommodation. And now, June twenty twenty three, we've got a hundred families in emergency accommodation. That is a one hundred and fifty percent increase. The report highlights that the cost of emergency accommodation has gone up. Uh the council is predicting a one million overspend in this area, but but as the report says, if if this trend continues, we could be facing a two million pound overspend. Uh these numbers are eye-watering and as we all know, they're not just numbers behind each pound. Uh yeah, behind each, yeah, behind the money, there are people, there are families that are in real, real tough situations, each each with their own story. Also of concern, uh children's services Bright Futures is showing a five point eight, uh five point eight million pound overspend. This is the largest of all of the directorates listed, although it's no longer a directorate, it's a company. For comparison, adult social care uh and health services is coming in a relatively modest uh two hundred and eighty eight thousand pound overspend. Uh compared to the five point eight million of Bright Futures. Also in the report, it it highlights that a hundred percent of the brighter futures savings are showing as at risk. Uh which is the worst again of all of the directorates listed. Although it's not a directorate's company. Green councillors are next of all concerned that the the capital programme is being reprogrammed. And five point three million pounds of zero carbon retrofit works are being moved back to future years, for example. Uh and with a climate emergency, we should be moving schemes forward, not not moving them back. Uh that that's one of many schemes that is being reprogrammed. Each directorate has been tasked with developing a recovery plan with further savings. But if the council is only delivering forty two percent of the proposed savings. At the moment, it doesn't bode well for the recovery plan. So I'd be interested in hearing. How the council is going to change its approach uh to make sure that the savings that are in the recovery plan. Are a lot more deliverable than forty two percent. Uh I'd be hoping for sort of eighty, ninety percent, given the financial situation that the council's in. Thank you very much.
I mean, I think we should say that we would rather always start realistic with us rather than unrealistic. Much worse if they were to tell us that all of the savings are green until we happily walk around to sort of the fourth quarter and then everything transpires to be a disaster. And we have had that before and it was quite a nightmarish situation. But also, you know, we have to be realistic and accept that some things, some things in the capital programme are going to have to be reprofiled. Because if we're talking about a massive crisis in the world around us, a rise in homelessness, we're demanding that officers respond to this new pressure that's emerged. We are going to have to reprofile some of what we do. We are going to, as councillor Terry said earlier. Have to accept that some things might progress a bit more slowly because there is urgent and emergency work to be done out there in our community. For the benefit and to try to do whatever we can to protect our residents. Do I have any other indications? No, no? Director of Finance, anything you want us to come back on? Councillor Terry, you're fifty fifty?
Well, I think as you asked me to introduce the report, I feel I can't not respond to councillor White to some extent. He just repeated what everybody else said earlier on. I know he had a prepared speech. We're all really worried about all the things. That we said about increasing homelessness, the cost of living crisis, et cetera, et cetera. You know, it's really clear that this government has underfunded local government for a long, long time. And we've done remarkably well and we must recognise and congratulate our council officers for all the things that they've done. To enable us to be in the position that we're we're in. To save it, I think Mr. Carter explained to you earlier on, councillor White, that some of the savings that were put in. Earlier were based on our best estimates of things like inflation going down, because, you know, the Prime Minister promised to halve it by now, didn't he? But it didn't happen and it isn't happening. Pay inflation, all the things that are affecting everyone because things are tough out there. And so it's really difficult at this point of the year to say anything other than to give us probably the worst case scenario. I think we're all hoping that is the case. But clearly demonstrating that work is being done to mitigate the impact of those pressures that are being felt, not least of all, the prudent budgeting. That this council has done for several years now, putting in contingencies where we recognise those challenges. But it is getting harder, but I have no doubt at this point in the year. That notwithstanding everything that's been said, that our council officers across the piece in all departments are working extraordinarily hard. To make sure that this council can continue to deliver particularly the frontline services. I suggest that you direct some of your comments to the national government. Because let's face it, that's where the responsibility lies for some of the crisis that we're in. You know, not just that things have got more expensive, but the actions that the government has taken itself. So it is regrettable that we may have to slow down some of the progress that we were making. But our commitment to things like climate change, our commitment to ensuring that people have a decent home to live in. Our commitment to making sure that Reading's a great place to live never goes away and we will continue to work hard to make sure that happens. I move the recommendations, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Terry. We should take it by a show of hands vote. I think those in favour. Sounds unanimous. Wonderful. What an evening of unanimity, complete and and absolute in the open session. There we go. Wonderful. Um so that will take us then to item ten, which is to move the motion for the closed session. I'll move as printed. Everybody agreed? Agreed. Wonderful. Thank you very much. Also unanimous. So I'll ask the committee services to cut off the live.